Mr. Chairman, we're left.
Okay, welcome everyone in the audience and those on YouTube. Today is Monday, August 5th. This is our weekly County Commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. No additions or corrections to the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for August 5th.
On second, hold in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're going to get right into the agenda. These are all action items. The first one is Resolution 2416, whereas it is responsible responsibility of the Valley County Board of County Commissioners to protect the safety and public welfare of the citizens of Valley County and whereas Valley County has and continues to experience fires which are threatening private citizens' structures and whereas the ability to provide emergency service to the area is in jeopardy and whereas the effect of declaration of a local emergency is to activate the response and recovery aspects of any and all applicable local and intergovernmental disaster emergency plans and to authorize the furnishing of aid and assistance thereunder. Now therefore be resolved, the Valley County Board of County Commissioners declares the following. One, a local emergency is hereby declared to exist within Valley County, Idaho, created by the Wolf Creek Fire and the Boulder Creek Fire in the West Mountain area, creating imminent danger and threat to life and structures. Two, the conditions require the activation of additional response of all applicable, I can't say that, local emergency plans. And three, such disaster may require state emergency assistance to supplement local efforts to protect, rehabilitate, and replace public property and to provide a coordinated multi-AGD effort to mitigate, avert, and lessen threats. And four, Valley County is fiscally challenged to undertake and sustain these efforts. And five, it is vital to restore basic services and ensure our continued fiscal stability and ensure adequate public safety. Hopefully this will be adopted this morning. One, is there anything you want to add to this?
To the local declaration now, sir. So we're still in a state of emergency on both fires. We have seen significant growth over the last few days. So right now, the Wolf Creek Fire is at 1,138 acres. We did go from 10% contained to 4% contained because we had an issue on a run because we have a thermal layer up there. And with that thermal layer, we're seeing fire activity through the night. It's about 75 degrees, so it's allowing for active burning throughout the night. It's not laying down. So they did have a run towards Spike Camp this weekend. It did burn some of Spike Camp. They had some equipment issues. Everybody got out safe. Now Spike Camp is no longer there and we have everybody at the ICP and they're deploying from there every morning to each of the fires now because the way the fire activity has been happening at night, they didn't want to keep people out there. With Boulder, we're looking at about 925 acres with about 5% contained, so we went from seven to five because of the growth. The majority of that growth, though, was a burnout we did on the south toward to the north edge of the east side of the fire to try and shore up those edges and make that a better line because it was just so jagged and there were some islands in there that just wanted to burn them out. So that's why we had a lot of growth. They still be able to maintain that one anchor point on the south end as they move forward. So we did get everybody moved over, but I will tell you that the incident management teams are only here for, you know, a 16-day to 18-day cycle and then we get new incident management teams. So hopefully, I don't know if this one will get extended because it just came off of a fire to another fire, this fire, so I don't know how they're going to do that yet. So we may be utilizing the EFC more with some more in briefings for new teams coming in throughout this. So we are still in a state of ready for evacuation zones seven and eight, which is in the Crown or Cascade Reservoir subdivision area. There's about 80 homes in there. It's about five miles south of the Tamrac Edge, southern edge. The reason we're in a ready is because we've reached the trigger point or the management action point as it came over the top. So they're in that ready zone. So we have not moved from there. We still have multiple fires on our side. You don't see them very often. They are in the green patches of the Herd Creek Fire in 2010. Once tomorrow, they'll flare up, but planes have been keeping them at bay. They haven't really moved out of those areas of those little green stands that are still within the unburnt area of Herd, so we're hoping to keep them there. But as temperature increases and winds, prevailing winds come, at any time, we could have fire coming over the top. So that's why we'll maintain a state of ready in those particular zones. If you notice on the maps, as you're looking through your information, that's all over the place right now, you notice that that northwest end was all spotty with a bunch of little spots here and there. Now it's one big red blot is because all those interior areas of the Wolf Creek are now burning and they're just cleaning themselves up of that dirty burn. So there's a nice, good edge about a quarter of the way down on the Adams County side where the fire edges and it's just slowly creeping through that stuff in that vegetation type. We still are in subalpine fir. We're getting about the embers that are going about a third of a mile once we get a crown. So we are seeing spots throughout. If you look at the infrared mapping, you'll see that there's spots all over, especially on the southern edge into the Wolf Creek drainage right now. So got a lot of activity going on. We're getting more hand crews hopefully within the next 24 to 48 hours for both fires as we move through. So those resources have been coming available to get some more line drawn and starting to get some anchor points built. We still have aircraft. Every evening, we're getting the big scoopers going for right now and we still have the heavies that we all had before on the fire, so that's the helicopters as we move through. So this could be a very long haul fire. We have less than 10% containment on either one and based on the trend, even though we're now in a trend of not seeing the huge increases of heat, we're still going to have a few days where heat rises and we're still going to have the constant heat because it is only the beginning of August. And generally, if you look at history, usually around the middle of August is when we start getting our thunderstorm cells building off of the coast and they come through. So there's still those opportunities of getting some more of those cells coming through and those cold fronts with more wind, which would allow for more fire activity and behavior to allow to come over the edge of the ridge line or continue to move towards the highway off of Boulder and Tripod. They did evacuate Tripod at the lookout there because they just wanted to make sure while ahead of the game. It did not advance towards Tripod yesterday, but it was good to just go ahead and take that step so we wouldn't lose that infrastructure there later. So that's a beef run.
Briefly kind of state, too, for those folks on YouTube, what roads are closed? I know Snowbanks closed.
Snowbanks closed, the, was it four something? Anderson-Rickick Roads closed on those closures there. I don't know the closures on this side yet.
Do you know how close it's getting to Blue Lake?
When I looked at the map, it was still quite a ways away from that particular portion.
It was getting in the Fawn Creek Drainage.
Fawn Creek Drainage is all in that now.
That's really thick stuff, some of that in there. It's going to be tough.
So there's a lot of dead and dying from the throstic moss on both fire. That subalpine fir, you know, it's extremely unpredictable stuff and when it burns, it likes to burn like a matchstick. So, you know, we have a whole lot of matchsticks out there to burn still, even though we had some big fire scars. One thing that's nice, though, is once, if it does come over, we're going to hit that burn scar and it does change fire activity. Yes, we'll see burning in that burn scar, but it's going to change the expediency of the activity. It'll give us another opportunity to come up with some more action planning items to try and hold it at that line before we get down in further into the state crown and to our home site. So we do have a little bit of a window there if we get a big rush. I'm hoping it's just like it is now with a little mop over here and there that we can maintain and contain to that area, but this could be a thing that we're doing for a while. And I just want to keep your breath that you might be seeing me a lot because I don't think these, unless we get a significant weather change, we're going to be seeing fire for a bit.
I don't mind seeing him. Do you mind seeing him?
Looks like he had a shower this morning.
Yeah, he's cleaned up.
He's okay.
Looks real official.
So is it, is it just kind of out the Wolf Creek? Is it just kind of creeping north?
So northwest and then it's going relatively faster to the south or northeast and to the southwest. So it's sort of doing this. On that southern edge, it's in that Wolf Creek drainage, which if you've been back there, is a lot of understory and ladder fuels and a lot of dead and dying falling that are just primed to burn and it's in those little drainages and just eating it up. And then you're still in subalpine fir, so then it's just going ahead of itself with a little bit of wind. And it was pretty hard to, it's pretty hard to capture right now. They're trying their best right now.
As hot as it's been.
Yeah. And you got to remember with the, with the heat, it's drying out every day and because it's not cooling off at night, it's still drying out. So we're getting big activity.
I kind of have a front row seat where I live there.
Yeah, you do.
And I love to go out about 11 o'clock at night and those things crown off. It's interesting because they go really big and then they just drop and the next one goes. It's over with real quick for that tree, that's for sure.
And the difference is with, just to go back to the declaration, is I wanted to add Boulder so we made sure it was on there since it is almost 1,000 acres and in, within proximity of some structural stuff. It's within the snowbank area, which is our huge communications area, and even though it's a little bit of ways from the watershed, the watershed is there for Cascade within the proximity area, so I want to make sure we're in that local declaration for that area as well. And that's why I had the clerk adjust.
Well, are they using any retardant or is it just all water?
We're using all water. When you use subalpine fir, it's so thick, the retardant never really makes it to the ground to get any penetration, so it's a waste of retardant. We get, there's better production with water usage, just like with the four corners.
So what I had a question, too, because I don't know, how, how hot can it get before you can't fly a helicopter? If it gets so?
So they've changed the rules, so I've had a lot of, we've had, we have had some issues with how come the planes aren't flying or why aren't the helicopters flying? So again, we're limited resources. The helicopter crews are not the full crews that they usually are, so there isn't that rotation. But with the new, with the new safety standards, flights, they can only fly eight hours a day. So they, the planning and operations people have to pick what's the optimum time to fly them. And then after 36 hours, they have to time out. And not just them, but the, but the aircraft has to time out and be remanaged and gone through again. So that's why you're seeing, well, how come they're sitting there all morning? Well, it's because they're flying in the afternoon better because they're getting more productivity with the use of the water and giving crews opportunity to do those lines and they can come back and back those lines up with moisture. So it's not that they're not working, it's just that they're within the standards of their safety measures.
Well, I think they're working. It's interesting to watch it. I saw those two choppers there at the, call airport, those little guys, they're pretty impressive little choppers.
Yeah. There's an orange on here that looks like it's kind of a one-man helicopter, true skinny, you know? But I guess it could lift a lot. Pretty interesting to watch.
Yeah, we just need a, need a motion to?
Yeah, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2416.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2416, local emergency declaration. I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Once we record that document, we'll make sure to email it to you unless you want to take it down and get it recorded right now. Whenever you're ready and then I can ship it to the state to get the paperwork updated for logistics there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mom.
I like your hard work.
Yep. Thanks for keeping up with it.
Okay, our next agenda item is the meeting minutes of July 29th. I thought they looked good.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the meetings of July 29th.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, and then the next agenda item, this is an action item. This is an amendment for a professional service contract for the Valley County Transfer Station. Scott, you want to kind of explain this one to us?
What is, this is additional engineering we're doing to design the Z-wall along the kind of the embankment, where as you come around there, the pole barn and stuff there and head towards that, that embankment there, we're, you know, designing a Z-wall that we can put there so that people, homeowners, just household trash will go there. They can back up to it, throw it into roll-offs and then not impact the floor in there. It'll also help us with this improvement because we're going to have to take a bay down at a time and, and still kind of maintain some type of capacity up there. So we're having to do geoengineering, geo-studies, the ground and surveying and stuff and then also the engineering and design of that. So this is an amendment to do that work.
So Scott, my question is, okay, after they fill the roll-offs, then I'm assuming Lake Shore is going to bring those in and dump those?
Yeah, they'll have a hook truck up there, they'll grab the roll-off, dump it on the floor and then, and stuff.
When they can do it, when there's room.
Yeah, and stuff.
And this increase, that cost $87,600, is that correct?
Yes.
So the total cost for Great West so far is $268,600.
Yeah.
And this is all engineering?
Yeah.
Or were it designed, not actual construction?
No.
I guess the next question would be, is this going to cut into our construction side of it?
No.
Would have enough to do that, too?
Yes.
Okay.
That's under your budget?
Well, it's under, it's under capital improvement is what it is. It's, you know, it's already funded.
Oh, okay. I don't know. He's got a copy.
Sorry, CIP, that part. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve this amendment.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment, professional services contract for Valley County Transfer Station.
And this goes, this amendment increases the contract from $181,000 to $268,600.
Correct.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Did you print it out?
I have. All right. Seems like a lot just for engineering.
Yeah, that's a lot of.
We've got, you know, the geo-study and surveying with subcontractors and to design the wall and we're looking at doing a covered structure there and stuff.
Oh, you're going to cover this, too?
Yeah, look at the, try and see if we can, you know, put a covered structure and stuff there or over this area. You know, it'll be a permanent fixture and kind of expansion.
Are we looking like at a Red Eye?
Actually, I can, I'll email you because it kind of has, this is kind of the concept right there, is what we're kind of looking at. It's kind of staggered, that's why I call it a Z-wall.
Oh, I see. So it's mostly wood structure, there's some metal uprights, metal frame, and then a wood roof over it looks like.
So is this something that can be used after we get the whole?
Yeah, this is something that's kind of permanent. It's something we're going to, you know, look at, you know, to help, you know, increase our capacity and, and cut down on the traffic actually into the?
Into the building.
Into the building.
Okay.
And that way the homeowners don't have to get back in there and, you know, and stuff with the?
You want to look at that?
Commercial, you know, rigs and everything else. We're working at, so try to kind of speed things up up there.
Well, it's good to be, build a bigger because we're going to need it.
Yeah.
I wish they'd take those pylons in front of the, what do you call it? The waste station as you drive through?
Mm-hmm.
Move them out about six inches.
You got to hit her straight, don't you?
See that or you catch your fender on that with your trailers.
Yeah.
Not that I've ever done that.
Okay, anything else? Everything good at the fair?
Yeah, we're, we're on there, some, you know, the arena's all up. We're looking at electrical. They got doors and stuff in the concession and stuff this week, so I'm just waiting for the electrician to get their, get his meter base in and inspected so get that permit number to Idaho Power and see if we can get the power in before this weekend.
So is that going to affect the announcer, the rodeo announcer?
At the time I told me, we should have enough power in so that the announcer?
Okay.
And set up his stuff and work. The poles are up for the solar lights and stuff, so those are going to get them mounted and put up. Yeah, we're?
Has the power already been dug in from that building all the way around back to where?
There's a three-inch conduit already run.
It's already run.
Yeah, everything's run. We just got to get that meter base and that permit number and an Idaho Power and come pull it in.
Okay.
Stuff, we're all ready. And then we actually got to come from there, that building, the conduit's already into the north kind of corner of the existing stands because that's the power for the lights underneath the, you know, so.
Yeah.
But the new stands are already in and stuff and all set up.
They look great.
And things, so we're, we're getting closer.
Yeah.
I'll swing in and talk to the guys at Idaho Power.
And?
Just because I, just because I know them real well.
Yeah, Paul Marshall?
Yep.
Yeah, and stuff. He said, as soon as you got that number, get it to me. They only been getting, once they get that number, two to three days, they can get in and get the, the lines pulled and stuff. I thought the electrician was supposed to be here last Thursday, but I've had a chance to get down there. I didn't know they were digging across the parking lot out there, so they were supposed to, I talked to the excavator, they were supposed to do this, but he said the big boss told us to keep going and I wasn't aware they were going to, they got our entrance to the parking lot, so.
Oh, my goodness.
So.
How far does it go, clear down to Old State Highway?
Well, yeah, it's supposed to go down to Howdy or to the intersection there at Howdy's.
On the south side?
What, yeah, yeah. Good. So, yeah, they're supposed to do the sidewalk clear down to that point.
All the way to Howdy's?
That's my understanding, yeah, what I'm meaning, that's just to the, to where Lake Road goes out and stuff.
Okay, thanks for the update. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott.
And we're going to move on. Our next item is an action item. This is Sun Valley County letter of support for the FY '24 contributions to Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. Trina, welcome.
Thank you.
Anything you want to add or say or?
I have two items that need to be reviewed. I need some input from the county that I haven't been able to receive. One is for Valley County IT support. We've had probably five visits from IT. And then also on the, Sherry was kind of up on this, well, she was up on this and had some input for the cartography work that was done. The cartography department printed some maps and she was going to give us a?
Isn't that how we've been doing it in the past? Or what's changed?
No, they printed maps for us for the first time, just some, some district maps. So I've got two items that don't have amounts planned.
Oh, okay.
We can establish a value and we can come up with a total, so.
Is that different from this? I don't have mine up. Let me look here. Where is it? Gosh, contribution was 85. Yeah, I got, cash contributions 85, office space 36, arch media space 525. Yeah, here is it. No. House seat 1632. What are you looking at there?
So you were requesting the commissioners to provide a value to that? That would be a question for the commissioners then to provide that value for what the cost was. I don't know if you had requested?
I talked to IT and it came back and?
So this is the first time that the clerk's office has been made aware that you did not receive a response regarding the amount of hours that they have assisted Valley Soil and Water Conservation District with, with IT work? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you have, isn't it?
And then the amount of work that the cartographer?
Yep. I don't know, 16. You got $17,000.
We do have IT in here.
Yeah, so I mean, the commissioners could request the IT department to, to report back the amount of hours that they have assisted the Valley Soil and Water Conservation District to, and then we can calculate that and provide a figure, but as of right now, until we have that information?
It would just be a guess.
It's going to be correct. So if we want to request the IT department, you're indicating to, to the commissioners today that you have reached out to the IT department asking for that information?
Just to Bill, not to Jeremy.
So they probably should go to Jeremy since he is the IT director?
Okay.
And they have GIS here as a value of $600. And I don't know if that, no, the printing is 1386.
And the cartography's not on there. We could leave it off, let's just sign that one that you have.
How soon do you need this?
I have to file it by the 16th and do it next Monday as well.
You want to postpone this and you can get with those two or we can help and let's get it accurate before we do that. I don't want to get anybody in horror, or see you.
Yeah, thank you. But we, yeah.
But the cash contribution is $9,500, is that right, Doug?
$8,500.
$8,500.
What's all about Forestry?
That was a private donation to the district.
Oh, okay. So we might want to mark that as private so we don't get that confused.
So.
So $8,500 and then if you get that filled out, get back on the agenda next week and we'll?
Then that's, so it'll just look like that. I'll just leave that copy with you.
Okay.
And I have one of exactly the same.
Well, I'm going to find the question mark.
Okay.
So we know. So we're just going to table this one?
I'll go check in and write down. Okay. If I get an amount, can I come back in today?
Yeah, if we're still going. We'll just postpone you until further action.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So this is postponed. So our next agenda item is not until 9:45, so we're going to go mute and we'll see everybody back here at 9:45. So our next agenda item is not until nine forty-five, so we're gonna go mute. We'll see everybody back here at nine forty-five.